Okay, let's have the meeting come to order, please. This is a meeting to discuss the Facilities Committee of Recommendation, and to try to get a sense of what we want to do as a select board. I'd say everybody should have the map and the handout. You want to update us on the church again, Scott? Because somebody got it filled out.
Oh, from before? It's my understanding that they -- let's stay 2030th. They're having a presentation next Sunday, which is the...
November 5th?
10th. And then they're voting on the 12th, because they moved it.
But you feel comfortable?
About...
Well, there's been...
Well, they've told us unofficially that they're going to be proposing a counteroffer. They did not say what that counteroffer is. So it's going to be discussed next Sunday, and then voted on. So I can only assume they're countering by, you know, the offer that we offered, and they're wanting more money, I assume.
Sure.
But it could not -- it could be something else. Because it doesn't say, it just says counteroffer, and they didn't say we're going to ask for more.
Okay.
But I'm told by them that it's going to be a yes, but we'll see.
A yes, but?
Yes, but it won't be a no, about that.
Yeah, good.
So it won't be a no.
So we can make two assumptions. Number one, let's assume, the first set on this discussion, assume that the church property will somehow can make that happen. And then the second thought was that we should have a back-off plan, just in case it doesn't. But we -- my feeling is put more effort to the front end right now, just assume that we can make a negotiation.
And also in terms of can we agree that the purchase of the church property will be a separate marquee, totally separate from anything else that we do?
Yes, a separate marquee.
Okay.
Absolutely. Because it was always my feeling that independent of this expansion, moving town hall over there, if that became available, I would try to get it anyways. For future expansion of the town, if it didn't work out.
Or we get another cemetery?
Yeah, somewhere. Yeah, they were in this way there. And you get a utility.
Yes, but also equally exciting.
I figured it would be. And the next thing I want to tie down, I think the SLUD Board had made it known that after the Facilities Committee had made their presentation, they had three levels, right? High, medium, and low. And that I think we're still comfortable with the medium plan, right?
Mm-hmm.
Just want to make sure that we're all in agreement, just for -- to tie this thing down. The next thing that I'd like to talk about is now that we have, in fact, assuming the church is going to go, we're going to make a negotiation, we're going to tie ourselves to the medium-type plan, I want to make sure that the square footage that was -- that should be properly allocated, to make sure there's no issues associated with it. And I'm looking for how the building is built, everything else at this point, it's just square footage of the piece of buildings, to make sure everybody's satisfied. Good evening.
Good evening.
Go ahead. I understood at one time there was a miscommunication or something with respect to the size of what is the proposed town hall.
Well, a couple of things. In a meeting a couple of weeks ago, Ms. Shanda, representing the Facilities Committee, said that the plan that the Facilities Committee is putting forward, if you will, was based on the plan Randy Stevens presented. But none of us knew that, but let's just assume that that's true. Mr. Stevens presented a building that was reviewed by all of the town staff as 5,000 square feet. So the Facilities Committee, I read the minutes, and the Facilities Committee, I'm assuming in an effort to cut costs, cut that down to 4,750 square feet. Again, it appears from the minutes of the Facilities Committee that there was no detail to that. They just wanted the building to be smaller so that it was less expensive. So we just don't know...
Where it came from.
Where it came from, or how we would make that work. So I guess one thing we could do, assuming that it's, again, the plan Mr. Stevens had presented, we could look at that and see what he meant to cut 250 square feet from that plan.
Was there any other conversation about any of the other buildings, the library or anything else that those people were talking about?
My understanding is that members of the Facilities Committee did meet with library trustees and library staff, and that they worked out, or at least worked together, on reducing the size of the proposed library.
Is that what you think is the proper amount, on the 6,000?
I guess I would have to assume so, yes.
So the first one is 3,028, that's the original building. The addition is going to be 6,000. There was no real changes in the existing town hall, it's just renovation. And then Hobo Shed is...moved, is that moved?
Yes. And is the historical museum.
What's this thing here, that one there?
It's historical, that's the old freight depot.
Oh, the old freight depot. Kind of looks small, but it really looked bigger on the property than it shows here, doesn't it?
Another issue that Mr. Tappin brought to light with this plan is the liberty elm. So you can see on his plan, it's right in front of the library.
Liberty elm tree.
And then I, when stood out there, I don't see how you can both save that tree and build that building the way it's shown on this plan. So it would seem to me that one of those things has to...
Go.
Go. Or be moved. Not the tree, I don't think you could save it, I don't think you could move the tree, but...
The tree is shown to scale, we did measure it.
Thank you.
It does have a spread of about 65 feet, and a 28-inch DPH, 28-inch diameter.
Beyond the fact that it's an elm tree, is there any other...
No, it's an oak.
Oh, sorry. My mistake.
Red oak.
It's an oak tree.
Any other historical significance?
I think that's...
It has a plaque.
Yeah. Yeah, it has a plaque, which is a...but since then, I don't know it myself.
Well, the thing is, also, that particular entryway doesn't necessarily have to be there. It could be more to the east. Is it east? Yeah. East? East.
Northeast? Yeah, I agree. Well, there's some other things. I'm just kind of going through a listing at this point, try to pull it together. I have two or three things about the plan that bothers me. Number one, all the bloody sidewalks drive me crazy. That's number one. And if we're going to do this kind of thing, I'd rather have the parking lot expanded so the parking lot touches the building somehow. I think that would be better, ease with respect to plowing and maintaining of the facilities. A little bit of sidewalk is good, if you want to walk outside. But for people who need entry to the library, or the town hall, or the other buildings, I think it should be pretty close. Maybe a small walkway to one of the other, the historical museum or something along that way. But especially ones that use routinely, the library and the town hall, and the old town hall, probably should have it relatively close. So... And I feel it should be expanded.
Parking should be expanded.
The parking should be expanded. How many, there's 47 spaces. Is there any other, anything that you can think of that we would have the need? Trying to figure 47 spaces, would there be any for 80 spaces? I'm trying to get a sense.
Well, it depends on what we end up, assuming this all comes together, it depends on what we end up using the old town hall for, which I think it's anticipated that it's going to be a meeting room.
Yes.
In which case, I believe Mr. Tappin calculated, let's just say you could put 100 people in that room, in the building.
Yeah, thank you.
Is 47 spaces big enough if you can get 100 people in that building for some kind of meeting, or presentation, or whatever they're using for?
Can I comment, please?
A couple of things.
Sure.
And you talked about parking lot. There's an alternative that I did talk to Randy Stevens about. I did ask him about the parking, existing parking lot design, and other types of parking lot designs regarding maintenance and plowing. And for both what I've drawn there, and for what is on the color drawing, there are issues. He said that the one that's shown in the color drawing, he thought was not particularly easy to plow. For what I've shown there, and that was just intended to be a rough, let's see what you could do with keeping the existing parking lot, but then adding to it. And as drawn there, that's 62 spaces. It's not drawn in detail to show where the handicap spaces are, but there's also some area that's not even marked as spaces. Randy pointed out that with this design, there are separate issues with pushing snow that distance. But that might mean use of different equipment, a snow pusher on a loader instead of a plow. As far as the number of spaces, for the size of the town hall, I went to some of the hotel websites, where they have information, if you're holding a meeting, and you have, you can either enter how many people you have, and what the arrangement is going to be, is to what kind of tables, or you can enter how big your room is, and then ask how many people can I fit. And you fit the most if it's stadium, or just seating, no tables. And for the size of the town hall, two of the hotel sites said about 130 people. Now, I didn't measure the stage area, because subtract that, and the fact that this building has columns in it, and so forth, but still, that's over 100. And with 47 spaces, and possibly well over 100, seems inaccurate. So that's why I started drawing that. And that was also the issue of...
To the buildings, yes. Thank you. Appreciate that.
And just for reference, this building, concentrated, which is what he was talking about, I see it is 127, and when you have tables, it's 159. Just an idea. The other thing in terms of just that plan, we're going to have a public state, because one of the things we checked out is they're going to have a column with only same entrance as the egress. You have to have one that's input in, and one that's out. So just be aware of that. That's doable.
That was only intended to be a...
No, I understand.
What could you start to do?
Sure, I understand.
As far as I know, no one has sat down with Randy Stevens, or someone from the highway department, to say, "What do you think of this parking lot layout?" So that was a first attempt at that, and it was only a phone conversation.
The other thing we're going to have to be aware of when we do do that is the intersection with Wednesday Hill Road. The state's going to be very particular, because that's right there. If it was just a long stretch of road, it wouldn't be so particular. But now with that intersection, that's what's causing the problem.
Oh, yeah.
So if you want to rock off Wednesday Hill Road, that would make things easier, but I don't think that would go over very well, so...
We can't do that this week.
No. I think if we can come to agreement that we just want to expand the amount of parking spaces, and have full contact with some of the buildings, I think it's moving us in the right direction. I don't think we have to get super detailed at this point, but I agree. So I think that helps, because 47 is not going to cut it. Maybe 100 will, and if we have those full contact. That way they can be direct access, and also, like we're just saying, delivery trucks or something that are next to the building, we make them delivery. Another question that popped up a little bit is with respect to Historical Society. I think I asked you, Julie, how does that tie in with the town? It is not a committee of the town.
No, they are a private 501(c)(3) corporation.
Private 501(c)(3). And they run the building, right?
They occupy the building. We...
We own the building. The town, we owns the building.
So far as I know, we own the building.
He's looking at me.
Well, they, we talked about it at a meeting last week, or a previous meeting, that they believe the building was given to them. But I don't know whether there's any documentation on that. In any event, it's on town land, and the town maintains it.
And it's under our insurance, too?
Yes.
Having a conversation with the Historical Society, there is an article that I have that shows that says, but it's an article out of the newspaper, and you know the newspaper people don't necessarily tell the truth. But in the article, it says that Mr. Brown and Epping...not you.
Oh, that's my father.
Maybe a relation? Really? Wow, okay.
There's difference.
Even in non-news papers.
It could be.
But in the newspaper, it says, "Mr. Brown donated the particular building to the Lee Historical Society if they moved it." And Dave Allen and company are the actually ones that moved it. Speaking to them about documentation other than that, they're going to look through. Mary Stevens was the one that orchestrated the whole thing, and there's a whole folder, and they're going to go through that and see if there's anything in terms of correspondence between the two of them, to show who owned it. But the town maintains it, the town has it under their insurance. So the other thing, just a clarification, one of the things we talked about at a previous meeting, the Historical Society is under no assumption that they are in control of the building. They're just using it. The Historical Society building, that's what we just talked about, but in terms of when they use the town building, they display things around the outside, but they'd be a user just like everybody else. They store stuff on the second floor, they use the, hopefully, the town tax collectors' office, this meeting space with other departments. But they're not under the assumption that they're in control of the building. So they're just an occupant.
Do they want to be?
No.
Okay. So there's to clear up a lot of issues at this point, just to use it like...
But there's issues with the fact that they're a 501(c)(3) organization, is there not? And we're putting capital money into it?
Well, towns can't spend money on private things unless there's a substantial, there's a whole set of language and statutes about the benefit that the town would have to give back. I'd have to read that and understand, or present to you exactly what that language says.
There's things that need to be done in order for it to happen the way the plan is right now. Is that accurate, or...
I guess, is the question, can the town spend money on the Historical Society because they're a private 501(c)(3)? I don't know the definitive answer to that.
On this plan here, I do understand that they could put around objects of interest and so forth, and maybe use the facility. Is this a, is there always a connection to the existing museum? I mean, is the door on the side, does that mean there's going to be an open pathway between the two?
The idea was have it to be connected.
Yeah.
But also be able to cut that off, so that if somebody's having an event, they don't necessarily get access to the Historical Society's stuff.
There's a side door in that thing, that's what I was wondering.
There is a side door, a break to go.
There is?
Yeah. But they would leave their displays out around the perimeter of the building, but they would be in like cases or something like that, not in cases.
Well, actually, it's not a bad idea, provide more opportunity, people see things who come to meetings there and so forth.
The other thing, I think it gets around, that the facilities would be in the town, old town hall, so if they're connected, then we don't have to have separate facilities for that particular building, because it's connected. So it's considered all one building.
And all these buildings would all be on the same leach field, is that the proposal?
That was the idea.
Because right now, we're just on a tank, right?
We're on three tanks.
Three tanks, I think.
Three dry well, there's a dry well for something.
One, two, three, I think there's three.
Yeah, so right now, we're not in compliance with our own regulations.
We're not complying with our own regulation much, it doesn't, I'm not surprised, put it at this point.
All right, and just for clarification, the Historical Society round sits on a basement, there's a basement in it. In this particular plan, it would sit on a slab, so there'd be no basement. And the same thing with the Hobo Shed. It would be moved onto a slab, so it's sitting on a slab right now. Right now, it's just on...
It's just dirt, right?
Yeah. And I agree, there's way too many sidewalks.
Yeah, somehow we need to characterize it up. I don't think we have to provide the super detail, it's just the fact that we just don't like the way it is, and they should be connected to all the buildings.
There is going to have to be, in terms of analysis, in terms of fire egress?
Yes.
Because you just can't have the door, and then it goes to nothing, you have to have something. But I'm not sure what those requirements are, so...
The library, it just says, I mean, excuse me, town hall is just one floor, there's no second floors there?
The new town hall?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just one.
Just one.
The only other thing we talked about is possibly putting in a basement for the utilities, but I don't think we agreed or disagreed on that, so I'm not sure.
So there's no need for elevators anywhere?
No. And the thing is, if you plan it appropriately, at least in the original design, there was a meeting room off the top. If you designed it appropriately, you could probably do that in the future if you needed to.
For expandability?
Yep.
That's why it's good that the town hall is over here, for expandability, instead of someplace else at that point.
Because the only thing you have to worry about going backward is the cemetery, and that's a long ways away, so...
Oh, yeah, way over here at this point. And this well is active?
I think that's intended to be a new well.
Oh, that's going to be a new well at this point. Which would feed all the properties?
Yes.
Or all the buildings, actually, at this point.
Current one's right behind the annex, I believe, isn't it?
Yeah, I figured it was at that point. On the implementation plan, which is the whole, I'm narrowing at page 11. The idea, I assume, is to, I have it written here, I'm just going to go through it, build a new town hall and purchase church property, which is probably just my idea, because much this is built, they may move it or from existing, which would rid the town administration tax for rebuilding and closing course to the new building. And then remove the annex on the site. I assume we're just giving away, donate it or something.
That's something we can talk about. There's certainly people in town that would love to keep it for its historical significance.
Yeah, when was it built?
1950.
Yeah.
Other people want to do controlled burn, such as yourself.
Yeah, they want to be doing, it's nice though.
So there's different things you could do with it. There's been an interest expressed with somebody who is kind of close to us, that they would take it and move it themselves if we give it to them, just to get it off. There's also been talk about taking it and bringing it down to Liverpool Park, and due to there's a garage to store stuff. One of the things that needs to be considered, there's a, in the Hobo Shed right at the moment, there is a generator on a big trailer.
Yes.
So we need a place to put that, so maybe if you did it in Liverpool Park, you could store it down there. These are all just thoughts.
Yeah.
So I think the biggest thing is, do we want to burn it? Do we want to move it someplace? Do we want to give it away?
But it goes off property, is what it goes.
But it goes off property, so... But what we do with it, I think that's up to the voters, in terms of... Because 1950 is old, but is it that old? I don't know.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's not old.
And the thing is, it used to be a...
Since I was born in the early 50s, it's not that old.
No. It was originally the firehouse, so there was, it was built with three bays.
Yeah.
So, and they just filled it in. So it's my understanding, you could take out that fill, and it becomes like a garage again.
Back to where it was originally.
But, you know...
The next thing, what's listed here is one of a current town hall. Is the library comfortable with this layout? Kind of pushes them back almost to the end of this thing.
Well, you get into the whole logistics of the thing. How do things happen? One of the things that the Facilities Committee and the library are in disagreement about, the library wishes to have their building expanded and renovated while they occupy it. That is going to be very expensive and very time-consuming.
Okay. Sorry. Go ahead.
I've talked to them about that, and although that is what they wanted initially, they were perhaps pushed to recognize that dollars are what's limits, what you can build.
Sure it is.
And so if you try to add on to a building that's already occupied, and then move into the new part, and renovate the old part while the new part is being occupied, that that costs more, and it takes longer. And so if dollars are limiting, it means that what you can buy is smaller, or more cheaply made. And in my recent conversations with library trustees, they recognized that, and they were resigned to that, that for the long term, they're better off accepting what's creating inconvenience for the short term.
Excellent. So that's good news.
Well, that's a, that's a good news, but leads me to my next question. Can't they use the current town hall the way it is, and move into that? Then we can do the library, and then go back and renovate the current town hall.
Yeah, I'm not sure. We didn't even talk about that particular option. It's possible, I guess. Because the space would be about the same. I'm not sure. The only thing that makes me hesitant is in terms of the town hall floor at the moment, the first floor, is not very...
Yeah, it's a loading, it's a loading issue.
So if you brought the books in with the fork laps, I don't know. I don't, I don't know the answer.
Well, these are kind of answers, I think it's good that we throw these questions out, and have these type of answers. And I kind of agree with you, that it's...
I think we're already at a point where we can't put file cabinets in certain places and so on, because of floor stacks, so...
If somebody else is going to ask that, we got to be able to say that, that we don't think the floors are going to hold on to it.
That's, that's my uneducated, I'm not a structural engineer, I do not know the answer. But I suspect if we have problems with file cabinets, we're going to have problems with big stacks of books, too, so... Because I think if we brought the library over and said, "Oh, you can only put in so many file cabinets," or whatever, that wouldn't work for them. I think they're going to need more stack space. Because whatever, whenever we move it, if we move it before or afterwards, either way, they're going to have a reduced amount of space. So I would think they want as much space to put books in as possible, so... But that's just me, so...
So it looks like this implementation plan is pretty, looks pretty solid, unless you've got a problem with that menu.
Well, you're going to get into the logistics of, because after you build, in the process of building a new building, you're going to have to put in your septic system, you're going to have to put in your well, and your utilities at that particular point. So whoever is doing this, if it gets approved, is going to have to take those things into consideration. Because right now, everything comes through the annex. That's where the water is.
Everything, that's the whole point.
That's where the phone is, that's where everything comes through. So that's going to have to be in consideration, so before that building moves, you're going to have to like make these other things already in place, so they have to put temporary septic from the library. It's going to be an interesting, interesting thing. But I suspect these, whoever, if it gets approved, whoever does this is going to have experience doing those kinds of things, so...
And what is it, you remember, I can't find it on here, how long was supposed to take?
Oh, the thought was for doing the town hall building one year, and then doing the current town hall the next, and then doing the library the third. But in terms of time periods, I'm not sure. The big thing is for the, moving the library into the town hall, try to make that so that that's their less busy time.
Yes.
Because less people are going to get everybody. But we didn't have enough expertise, as far as I remember, in terms of saying, "Okay, this is going to take six months, this is going to take..." We didn't get into that, so...
Well, it looks like it's going to take more than three years, on a guesstimate.
Well, it depends how quickly things go. And I think you've got some, some hard points in terms of, this can't happen before this has happened. So, you know... They can be renovating the current town hall, and they're relocating the Historical Society and Hobo Shed, and working on all those things. But that has to be, the current town hall has to be finished before the library can get out, and then they start that next phase of the project, so... and then they start that next phase of the project, so...
The next thing I wanna discuss is, and then if I get done, I'll open it up. You can hear my voice on the other side, is what are we asking for on the March meeting? We've had discussions in the...
What?
The March meeting?
Deliverance sessions, personally, but...
You know, I, I agree that the warrant for the property, that's number one, we gotta go over and work with that. I don't think there's time to put together a full, you know, a full request of bond, because it needs engineering details and everything else. So I wanna make sure we know what we're gonna try to go for at this point. I'd always liked the idea, non-asset referendum, but we discussed the other night. Something that the citizenry can bite into? So it has to have some, something to it, like monies for engineering trarms or studies or something, at least set us on the path.
The people I've spoken to, because there seems to be two themes of thought, at least the people I've spoken to. One, in terms of doing a warrant article for monies for engineering drawings and things like that, which is kind of a good idea, that can be your litmus test, is do they want the whole big thing even to move forward? The negatives I've heard about that are, you spent so much money now, you're gonna spend even more money? And, but the thing is, I said, well, either way, if he gets approved, you're gonna have to do that anyways.
True.
So they're kind of like, mm, so that, there's two arguments for that. And then the people that have said, you know, we already spent all this money, they just wanna go ahead and do it, and do the three point four million. But the people that are against that seem to think, well, I don't have enough information to decide if I want to support three point four million. So you've got those kind of like two camps, at least that's what I've found. So, I'm under, under the assumption that I would think it would be best if we give them the litmus test one, we need X amount of money for drawings, the high-level drawings, not detailed engineering for, like, heating and cooling and stuff like that. And then let's see if they're interested in it. If it passes, then most likely, they're inclined to move forward. If they're not, then that's definitely a signal to us that, no, I don't want spending the money, I don't wanna do anything. Which leads us into, what do we do? Do we do?
I can, I'm agreeing with you at this point, I think it's something, I just wanna get the feeling of the townsfolk to see what they want. And I think that's one of the only ways to, to move it in that direction.
And that's what hopefully the committee can help with, in terms of the TCVC committee?
Town Center Vision Committee. I got it down now.
Oh.
About the control?
Can help in terms of getting the information out, not necessarily to change people's minds one way or the other, but to provide the information of, okay, this is the state of the buildings. This is the plan that we've kind of come up with. And also, when they're talking to people, you know, getting that information out, get some feedback. You know, is everybody saying, oh, you're totally daft, no way is this gonna pass? Or, I kind of like it, but I like it tweaked, but at least they can, at least get some feedback from people. Because I've talked to people, but I can't talk to four thousand, whatever.
One hundred?
No, twenty, what is it, three thousand voters?
Yeah, three thousand voters, yeah, there's people in town, but they're not all voters.
Yeah, so...
What's your feeling, Karen?
Well, I have a couple of things to bring up.
Okay.
Only that are not necessarily related to the plan. I think the plan is, is as good a plan as you can, where we are right now, I think it's as, as good as you can ask for. I mean, I think the committee did a good job. I have a couple of concerns relative to, to start with. A couple of times when we met with the committee, the, the chairwoman mentioned that they had a, a public meeting with, I think it was like forty people attended, so on and so forth. And they used that as a, the input from those forty people as a barometer for where they were at with this. But the output of that doesn't jive with the survey that was done in two thousand sixteen, and the results of that survey, that was a lot more than forty people, it went to five hundred and sixty-one households. And the response out of the five, the response out of the five sixty-one was sixty-four percent. So, my concern is that we appear to be just ignoring that survey because we didn't necessarily like what it said. So I think we have to be ready to address that as we go forward to the public. Because if I was the public, I'd say, wait a minute. You know, you're saying, this is what the forty people said. I assume that'll come out. But what about the survey that was produced in the master plan, distributed in the master plan, so it's out there with everybody? And how we roll that into, into making a decision? We can't just ignore it, and say, well, we don't, we don't like that one. So that's, that's one concern I have, only in that we satisfied both sides of the aisle. The other one is, I know that they went in and downsized the building in order to get to a, apparently a certain cost. And I just wanna make sure that in doing so, we left enough room for those things. For instance, one of my big concerns is document storage. With all of the historical documents and everything else that we are trying to gather, I don't think we know how big that elephant is. We have a storage container that sits outside town hall. We have a room here at the public safety complex, I think they're also scattered in other places, I'm not sure. But for instance, the annex has a lot of documents. We had a proposal, I think, to, to look at digitizing our documents, which would make a big difference. And I don't know if, where that, where we are with that, but if the only issue with that was if you would funding, then to me, that becomes part of the cost of, of this entire project, is to, is so we can downsize that document storage burden, and get everything in place, and have a nice, have enough room for everything. Those kinds of things that are sitting on the periphery of the project, which I think the project looks fine. You know, it's gonna be a matter of selling it, and, and making sure that when it, I mean, there are some costs that are not included in this, furnishings, systems, et cetera, et cetera, that have a pretty good price tag that go along with them. So when we say three point something million, that's for the building. But you can't do anything with the building, because it has to have all those other things, some of which might come out of the current buildings, but that's not enough to furnish. So I think there's some ancillary costs that we have to identify. We have to budget for those things, you know, what's it gonna, what's it gonna cost to, to put the, the systems in place, to put the furniture in place, et cetera, so... So that's, that's where my concerns are. I think the plan itself is fine.
Couple of things in terms of your thing about the master plan survey. I think depending, at that particular time, I don't think those people had the information in terms of the status of our buildings, how the things that are problematic. So I think if you get that information out, I think that, that might change.
You might be right.
I don't know that.
I just wanna be sure we get, you know, we answer, we answer all the questions.
But I think that's part of getting the information out. If you had your house and it was the town hall, you would probably say, hey, I need to do something to fix this. So hopefully, that is the same kind of thing that you'll get from the citizens when they find out what the state of that particular structure is. I don't know, maybe they won't. In terms of documents, there's some, um, there's one fireproof safe in the annex, and that's the only thing that's left in there. At least for the historical, uh, heritage commission. There's some fireproof safes and some file cabinets upstairs in the town hall. So that's what's left, the rest of the stuff is over here. And they are in the process, they have a report, and they're going through the process of, one, there's some steps they have to take for moving all that stuff over here. So they're in the process of doing that. They're also gonna be doing a second grant for doing the actual supplies and stuff, to archive all that stuff, so it's part two. But that's what they're working on at the moment, so... And according to the ladies, the, the ladies that came to do the assessment, they saw everything that we have as a town, historical-wise. And all that stuff will fit in that room, so they're not looking for extra space. In the plan that we had for the town hall, there is a separate kind of vault area for the town clerk tax collector. Her stuff has to be separated. The thing that I don't have any identification on in terms of size-wise, is the stuff that the town has to keep, the time that, the stuff that we have to keep. So that's a consideration. Maybe you need to look at that in terms of new town hall, if they have a little vault space or something, or someplace. And the biggest thing that the ladies said when they came from the Northeast Document and Research Center, is not fireproof stuff. Your biggest threats are human beings, and rodents and insects. Those are like eighty percent of your problems. Fire is, it's, it's one of the problems, but it's not a very high problem. Because that's your two biggest things, in terms of, if you have paper, rodents like to chew on things. So as long as you keep the rodents out of the insect town.
The C container, it's empty now?
No, there's still, there's a few things in there.
Well, I know that there are assessing records in there that we do not have to keep.
Okay.
And I believe the heritage commission is going to look at them and determine whether they had any interest in any of that.
I passed that on, you'll talk about it at the... Okay, so I think the town clerk, she still has some stuff in there.
I don't know.
I think she does.
Um, there's also an entire room in the annex with files that have to be kept, so...
That's town's files, though?
Well, yes, but we still have to keep them, and we have to keep them forever. The, I guess I'll continue to call it the Randy Stevens layout for town hall, did identify space for both planning and zoning storage and municipal records.
All right, I just wanna be sure we captured all.
Well, it's good to talk about those things, because other things, other people will come up with those particular questions.
And can we talk about Tate's twelve and funding? So, I guess on the figures page, it said it was three million, four hundred and eight pounds, what's it, a dollar? Which is on page eight, right?
Yep.
Yeah. And the library reserve fund is three thousand, here on eighty-six thousand. Library capra reserve fund, sixty thousand, seventy thousand donations. Town building capra reserve fund, is that correct?
No, it's not more than that, I think they just...
Notice the asterisk, John.
Right, they just identified that as an amount that could be used.
Because those, that particular amount is amounts that are already in the CIP for things that we have to fix in the current buildings. But if you're renovating all those buildings, you're not gonna have to fix those things.
That's exactly right.
They're in the press, so, but some of them are heating.
Furnaces, I think there was a painting.
Yeah, so, John has a list, I don't have that in front of me.
That's okay, I just wanna make sure where we're going.
And those are possible things, we could use it, so...
And as a future, it says funding potential source. Town building capra reserve fund, again, is a possible source of funding. You could, and the undesignated fund balance of two, which is, you could, could do any of those particular things, but...
And those are possible, so you don't have to use those, so...
So it gets down to unfunded expense, just over two million dollars? What was the cost of the public safety complex, do you remember?
One point four or something.
Somebody's gonna ask that, and one point, and about the transfer station?
Six hundred...
Six hundred thousand?
Six hundred, yeah.
Of the bond?
Of the bond?
Yeah, the bond.
It's about, yeah. Well, the, the bond for the, this, this building was one point two million, so...
In what year?
Two thousand and two.
Two thousand and two?
That's what you said.
So fifteen years ago.
Yeah, give or take.
So I guess when I'm looking at this one point two or whatever, and you're getting it down to just around two, and so it's not far off at this point. I'm trying to get a sense.
And the example that I gave in terms of, this is from the new trip on back, I put in two and a quarter million.
Yeah.
So it gives you an idea, so that's two hundred and somewhat thousand, or a hundred and ninety thousand more than you need for the remainder, if you use those other items.
Yes.
But it gives you an idea in terms of what that cost of that money would be. And that rate is the rate that they sold the bonds at the last bond offering. So that rate is not guaranteed in the future, but at least gives you an idea of what they last sold that.
How much you think the delivery session associated with the cost of those engineering plans, those preliminary litmus test plans? Any vision?
I'd be lying off the top of my head, I think we'd have to ask. Because what I'd be looking for, is I'd be looking for elevations.
Yeah.
I'd be looking for floor plans, I'd be looking for a model.
That's correct.
So those are the three things I'd be looking at.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure in terms of how much that would be, I think we'd have to ask some professional person, and just say, hey, you know, this is what we're looking on, approximately how much would that be? One of the things we could do is we could ask Mr. Goodall, top of his head, if he'd give us around ballpark figure? Or if he'd give us a figure, and just see what he says. Because this, this is, this particular drawing is not enough for people. When I, when we show, when I show them this, they say, oh, that looks nice, but what's in these buildings? What is it gonna look like? And I, I think that's the next step that we need to do in terms of giving people an idea. We kind of have, at least for, kind of part of it, is that Randy Stevens ran for the town hall, but we don't have anything in terms of library, what would the library look internally?
And also about future expansion, if there's opportunity in the, and I guess we can expand out somewhere, right?
For the library?
No, for the town hall.
Town hall, you can go backwards. Well, there's certain, you'd have to stay so far away from the cemetery.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's, that's a significant amount, you're, you'd have to like triple the building.
I think it's only fifty feet or something like that.
So, that's a possibility. The other thing you have to deal with, which, as you know, the town is immune to their own setbacks, but you kind of wanna stay away from the bog as much as possible.
Yeah, I agree.
That's why the library is going this way. But as you can see, even with this expansion, you're still within the seventy-five and one hundred and twenty-five foot setbacks, so... Only part of the building is out of that particular area, so...
So where are we? Some things I made notes on, I just wanna go back to get it. I think we just discussed it, whether town hall really meets all the needs of the townsfolk administration. Remember, there was some discussion about what was the Steven Fields development compared to where the figures are here. But I also am hearing that the library, people are pretty comfortable with the square footage associated with the library. The square footage of the park now should be increased dramatically, or probably well over a hundred. And there should be somehow contact with some of the buildings, especially the library and the town hall, where there's gonna be a lot of activity. I don't expect as much activity in the Hobo Shed, in the museum, and even the renovated town hall, there'll be some, but not as much that would happen in the town hall and the library ditch, and so... Full contact with the buildings somehow. It appears Historical Society is very interested in participating, but they're basically gonna be showing their wares in a museum-type format, and once while, meeting in a room at that point.
What's our position on the Bannister property?
Not usable?
Not usable?
Yeah. Okay. That's just my opinion.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the audience, that I'm, they're sure that they're gonna raise a question about the Bannister property, and I just think that we should have a position on it.
It's a good question, and I think the problem I have with the Bannister property, I have less problem if there was no building on it.
I agree, I agree.
That particular building...
I think a lot of people feel that way, to put the buildings there.
And I understand that's the problem, and it's not finished inside, and for the town community, you'd have to put in an elevator to access the second floor. And it's already kind of cordoned us in in terms of what those particular spaces are.
Okay, I would be careful with that, I don't think you have to put in an elevator to access.
Yeah, actually, we do.
Oh, no, only if you made it, uh...
If the public would go to the side, be required to go up there.
Well, then you don't have to do that.
You're not using the second floor?
Well, sure you are, you can use it for other things. I'm not pushing the Bannister building, I just want, I just want us to have a clear position on it, because these are the questions we're most certainly going to have to answer to, to the...
If we don't use the Stevens Field for anything, they're gonna say, well, it's available, it's town property. But it no longer has a town-centered partial effect, if you wanna call it that.
Well, the other thing to consider is in terms of, I kind of like the Stevens Field for a couple of reasons, but you're not saving any money, you're not buying the property, which is, which is a plus. But the problem is, when you have that building over there, now you have to put in a new septic system and a new water thing. By the time you factor in all those costs, you haven't saved anything. The only plus I see in terms of all those particular things is you have over... The only plus I see in terms of all those particular things is you have overflow parking for both facilities, where we're parking for here, we're there, and vice versa. I see that as the only plus of that particular location. It does help out. One of the things we haven't talked about, which I think it's okay based on the conversations that we had, is the whole logistics of this thing. In terms of, you've got, we don't have one. You've got the annex here, so basically you've got, that stuff there.
Yep.
One of the things I've heard is in terms of, well, how can you create that building without disrupting those people? And the answer is, you can't totally not, not disrupt them, because you're gonna have noise, you're gonna have construction materials. But supposedly, there's enough space here so that they can cordon off this and do their thing. They're not gonna stop noise. Noise is, you know, rattling or whatever. But the disruption's gonna come when they have to start doing those systems. When they say, put in this particular building, put in the leach field, put in the well, you're gonna have to then cut over certain buildings onto those new systems. And they're gonna be interfered with at that particular time. If you do the Stevens Field, all that stuff is done separately. They're not gonna interfere. But, you know, we just need to be aware of that. Because people are gonna say, like, if they live over here, well, how noisy is it gonna be? It's a construction site. It's gonna be noisy.
It's a construction site.
Uh-huh. The good thing is, there's nobody in the parsonage, so they can't complain. The dead people out back aren't gonna complain. But you, you've got residents that live around, they're, they're gonna hear the noise, so. And vice versa, the same thing with the Stevens Field. You've got people that live on George Bennett, they're gonna complain, they live right across the road, even right next to it, they're gonna...
Okay, where are we? Do we need another drawing?
It depends how you're gonna proceed. Yeah. I think you've got a drawing here that gives people an idea if you're going for the litmus test in terms of looking for engineering drawings and stuff like that. This gives people an idea of what your vision is, if you will.
How do we, how do we stand on the new committee as far as forming it?
You have three members that agreed to serve, three people that agreed to serve. You know, you just need to sign off on them and swear them in and...
I would like to propose another name. I come up with a name. I'd like to propose Richard Jeffries. He lives on Wednesday Hill Road. He's served on other town things before, so I think he would give another look to the committee in terms of people that he associates with versus the people that are already there. Um, I don't know if any of you guys know him.
No, I don't think so. Might know that, so, yeah, people are bi.
Mr. Bubbe is gonna sit on that committee.
Well, if we can get one more, depending on how we count the five, that would give us five if he was interested to serve. If not, if we don't count the select representative, we need at least two more members.
Yeah, I would number five, if there was volunteers. Paul, first.
Excuse me. I would suggest that, uh, representatives from the historical side of the equation, and from the library side of the equation, at least one person should sit on this committee. Uh, it just makes sense, 'cause they're, uh, most intimately connected. Find somebody who's intimately connected with those ends and, and, you know, they should be there.
Please?
I did, just before the meeting, uh, tell Kerry Brown that I had read this, uh, charge, um, and I do now see that there are places where I could contribute, so, um, and specifically, uh, that was item one and item two B. Current state of town center buildings, including code, and specifically ADA issues, and also issues the plan addresses and those that it doesn't. Uh, I think one of the things that's needed here is not just a presentation of the plan, but you need to have a lot of detailed backup material to answer questions. It may not be presented, but when someone says, well, why do you need to change, uh, the ADA access? Town Hall already has a ramp. You need to be able to say, well, ADA says it's supposed to be X, Y, and ours is not. ADA says it has to have a landing such as this, and ours, the slope is too great, and on and on. You need to know those details.
So you volunteer, is what you're telling me?
So I'm saying that if you think someone that's good at that...
Yes.
Is that kind of analysis, right?
Is there some collusion that I volunteer? Or is he trying to volunteer his wife? I'm not sure.
No. Can I just make a comment?
No, wait, she's right.
So, uh, as you know, the state declined to provide us assistance. They said that they couldn't take it on, it was too much. Um, but they did send us the, I forget, ninety-some-odd-page checklist, which I provided to, you know, Booth. He's reviewed it. I also provided him with the list of items with cost attached that Mr. Godano had presented. Um, so he is in the process of going through all of that, but he seems to be of the opinion that number one, a lot of the cost seems, seemed elevated, um, and then a number of the things may not be necessary. So in other words, we, if we renovate the existing Town Hall, we probably do not need an elevator. So.
There we go.
So we just wanted...
Don't think we're putting in one anyway, so.
Sorry.
I have another meeting to go to, but I, I just have to tell you that, uh, that when I heard the, the proposed name for the committee, I kinda tripped over the word vision, uh, because it, it seemed to, in two ways. One, one is that it seemed to maybe one suggest that the committee was going to create a vision, when I think there is a vision already. And people might get confused over that, even people on the committee might get confused over that. So if you have a drawing and a plan, the committee is not creating a vision, but then I couldn't think of a substitute word. I think what they're being called on to do is, is to bring the pieces together and mark, develop a marketing plan for it. And in that sense, they're visioning, but...
That's exactly what you're hitting on, they hit it. It's a, it's a marketing effort.
Yeah, so...
Well, it's better than when I had a campaign.
I think, I think, we had this discussion because we had a problem with that wording as well.
Yeah.
Because in my, in my view, it's not marketing. Marketing, at least for me, has a negative connotation.
Yeah.
I'm trying to get you to think the way I think, and buy my product or do whatever it is. And at least from my point of view, I want to, uh, provide information to the public so they can determine their decision themselves. And, um, so it's more of a public information kind of thing, but we struggled with the name.
Yeah, we sure did.
I don't know.
Yeah, I just, other people might struggle with it also. I, I did try to think of a word to substitute for that, I was unable to do that.
I understand. But to me, it's superior marketing. I mean, that's what you're doing. You wanna give them material, that's marketing materials. That's where you wanna put it in front of them, you want them to look at it, digest it, and then put words with it, and, and just keep repeating it as much as often as possible until it's time to vote. And then try to answer all the questions.
Yes, exactly.
So, but in either case...
Yeah.
Whatever, whatever you call it, you've gotta convince them that it's the right thing to do.
Well, you gotta provide the information so they can make up their minds themselves.
Yeah.
So, I think, I, I don't wanna be advocating you need to do this or else, or, you know, threaten them in a way. I just wanna provide the information.
Then they make the decision.
They're, they're, they're smart. If, you know, they think it's prudent, then they'll vote for it. If they don't, maybe they'll come and say, well, I like this part, but I don't like this part. I don't know. You see?
Can we get back to Mr. Tappin? Are you volunteering?
Yes.
Good. I just wanna make it, put that down. Put it in the notes. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. So now you have, like, five plus you.
Depends on how you count it to five. If the select representative is part of the five or not. If you can get Mr. Richard to, uh, Mr. Jeffries to volunteer as well.
I think that would be an opportunity.
Can we ask the town administrator to contact him? He lives on Wednesday Hill Road, right on the corner of Decato and Wednesday Hill. I don't have his contact, so I'm a fun of it.
So do you have enough scott at this point to move forward?
Yeah, if we can get Mr. Tappin to sign up.
I said yes.
He just did. Oh, he has to fill out the form.
Oh, you're gonna fill out some special, then you gotta sign away.
Then you gotta be appointed and...
You got a thought for an initial meeting?
I don't have to say anything from Mr. Cedarholm?
Town Center Development Committee.
Ooh, development.
Look at that.
That's an idea.
I knew he was here for a functional reason. That sounded better.
The TC, DC?
DC.
TC, DC.
We oughta make it AC, DC.
AC, DC. Isn't that a band or something?
Something with the AB four.
I don't know. I could come up with something.
Alternative?
Alternative Committee for Development? I don't think...
Oh, you need ABCD, right?
ABC.
Alternative Building Center Development Design. I'll have to think about that a little bit.
The other thing that I'm, who was that brought up in terms of, I think it was Julie that brought up, in terms of the numbers for the, um, ADA and the code issues, all these per numbers are very much, very conservative. So I think it's gonna cost an awful lot less. The other thing that's in here, if you've noticed, a lot of contingency money, that there's an awful lot of contingency money, which is good. But I think as you get into the project, you're gonna find, I think, that when you go up, if you get, if we go to that particular part, when we get into the RFP process, you're gonna come to find out that some of these, you don't have a lot of money left over, I think.
Well, that's why, in some ways, if we can get it below two million, it's more palatable. Since you had the other one at one-four, you set it at one-five, and then we're journeying six, when did we do the transfer station? It's like one year later.
One year later.
So you've got six hundred thousand, plus the one-four, you have two mil right there, so we're running it close. So we're reasonable, is what I'm saying. We're in the ballpark.
Well, also in terms of those rates are in the high threes, these are in the low two, but the high two, so you're, you're gonna percentage off of that, but, but I think it's something that the townspeople have to be, you know, educated and see if they wanna move forward. But I think one of the important things, which I think we well mentioned, and I think John just did it, is you need to have answers to those questions. Because if people are asking you questions, and the people were answering, like, uh, oh, um, people start thinking, well, they didn't really think about that. What other parts of the plan did they not think about either? So it's like, the, the thing I created too is sharks smelling blood in the water. You know, just as soon as you get a whiff, people start thinking, ah, they don't really know, I don't wanna go support that. So it's important to have a session that you do all those things, devil's advocate. Somebody asks you this, what do we say? And at least when we did this building, each member of that committee had certain areas that they were assigned to. So if somebody asked a question about, you know, fire, whatever, Joel and Byron answered that question. This is something about unit numbers. So the police department, the police chief, you know, Chuck answered those particular questions. So that's something you have to consider as well, so that everybody's kind of an expert in that particular area, so.
No, I think that's a, that's a good move, everybody. The other thing I thought about is, as the committee meets and they formulate these answers, let's say, you know, call it frequent, you know, frequently asked question type of thing. Yeah, we can have written response and put it in the e-cry and just continue to have a rolling written response. And every time there's a new question and the committee makes a decision how to answer it, put in the e-cry, and the next time the cry comes out, it just adds to it. So there might be in the end a hundred frequently asked questions with a hundred answers, maybe the first, beginning only three or four.
That could be something, uh, I would envision the committee would want, I don't wanna speak for the committee, but I would envision the committee would want something in their weekly.
Yes.
Maybe there's a link to the website that we have, that we just have a running thing of all the questions, you know?
Absolutely. I think that would be good.
Check out the newest frequently asked questions or something like that, so.
I think that would help to keep people, you know, keep everything transparent and, and keep it flowing as much as possible.
Plus, hopefully, it will engage people to have conversations amongst themselves. That seems to be the thing that works the best in terms of getting words out to people, so.
And the only, it's not a missing piece, but I think you talked about it before, is who's good at looking for funding sources within the state and other areas? I mean, that was something with the library, they tried to work on that, and it's hard to do, but it's, you know, somebody understands grant writing and how to go out to funds. We do have a historical building, which is the existing library. In many ways, Town Hall has a lot of history that's tied to this one.
I, I don't believe that there's a whole lot of money out there for me to use in the building.
Really?
No. L-Chip, L-Chip provides some funding, and they talk it up, and it's a great thing, and maybe it can leverage more funding in terms of fundraising, but when they hand out money, it, it's twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the Heritage Commission is working on getting those particular buildings applying to the historical research. Uh, and that's the same thing that we're finding, well, that they're finding, we're finding. Um, yeah, we're talking tens of thousands, we're not talking hundreds of thousands.
Isn't that a double-edged sword? If you do too much modification to the buildings, they no longer qualify for being an historical building, right?
Yeah, there's certain ones, like for instance, where's my one? For instance, um, the Town Hall, the current Town Hall, it's prime, because one, if it's aged and it has historical significance, it hasn't been moved. Um, but in terms of renovating it, that, that's perfectly defined with them. So that's like A number one. Um, this, the Historical Society building, it's, it'll get very good points in terms of its significance and uniqueness, because, um, there's, there was only four that they found documentation that are still in, in existence, and we got one of them. So that's gonna score very highly. It's gonna get points off because it's moved, been moved twice already, and this could be a third time. So, but even their opinion is, it's still gonna score high enough to get something. Um, the hobo shed, A number one. They don't have any other one in the state that they can say, that was used as a hobo shed. So that's gonna score wicked high. The problem is, we're gonna move it.
I know, it's, I wonder, I looked at it.
That's the problem.
Maybe we should leave it alone.
Well, you know, I don't know in terms of the number, in terms of if you leave it alone versus moving, you're gonna get five hundred dollars more, you're gonna get a thousand. It's not gonna be tons of money. Um, the library is of significance, but you add it on to it, I know, three times, this will be four. So that's gonna score very low. They're not saying don't apply, but don't expect any money for that particular renovation. So, and we're getting rid of the annex, so.
Yeah, that's gone. So just if you're curious, you know, hobo shed thinks it's a, where, where is it, who you know hobo stayed in there? Somebody sent it?
Town reports.
Really? Just town reports put funding aside to support it?
There was two Hobo Sheds, according to documentation. We have, this is one of them, there's another one up at that crossing, Steppen toe Road. There was a crossing up there, and there was a Hobo Shed up there as well.
Really?
Yeah. That one's gone, but this is still.
When was it taken down? Do you remember?
I don't know. I don't really know. If you look at the, oh, it was done in nineteen something. There was a book that was done, which we just reprinted, but in that particular one, there's a map that shows the two Hobo Sheds.
Interesting.
And I have any more impression of when it was taken down. I suspect it was put up about the same time as ours. It was a reaction to the, when the railroad came through in eighteen seventy-four, seventy-five. And they had some hobos. But then during the depression and stuff like that, of course you get more people out there. So it was a reaction of the town residents saying, we want these people in one place. We pay for them because the town provided money for food and housing and stuff. So the townspeople figured, get them in one place, we know where they are. They're not wandering all over the place, asking everybody for food and stuff like that. So that's what they did.
History is so interesting.
Well, can be contradictory too, because we have people reminiscing of, there was a schoolhouse in South Lee, next to the road that going to Jim Banks's.
Yeah.
Just, well, at the intersection of the road, just up there. So there's a disagreement.
Meeting open for?
No. No. There's a disagreement in terms of when it burned. There's some documentation that says it burned December seventh, nineteen forty-one. Sounds familiar?
Sounds familiar.
Some people say it was December fourteenth, nineteen forty-one. So some documentation says one, some says the other. So according to somebody who was going to school there, it was the fourteenth, so, because it was right after Pearl Harbor.
Well, I'm going to go look inside that building. I was reading a book about hobos, because I was trying to figure out where it came from. A hobo book.
Oh, hobos.
A hobo book. And they had, they had a whole series of signs that they used for hobos that would be coming in after them, talking about, you know, what the facility was like, what kind of food might be available within the town. And they didn't do it in strip, they did it in these signs that they put all over the place. I wanted to see if we could find any of those inside there.
So we'll put some up next to your house?
It's not old. Yeah, exactly. So how are we going to deal with this issue with respect to the square footage associated with town hall? Do I go back and use the square footage associated with the Randy Stevens plan? I want to make sure what's on here is acceptable to all the departments, so. Well, I agree. I think one of the things we have to do is size everything and make sure it's the right size, i.e. doesn't meet the requirements. I mean, rather than, you know, say, well, we're going to shrink it to reduce costs. You know, I want to do what they need. We need to build it to meet the needs, present needs at this time.
Yes, just to give you an idea, reducing that particular two hundred and fifty square feet, at the hundred and sixty dollars a square foot, that's forty thousand dollars. Because that's what we're talking about. So we're talking about tons of money.
So we should go back to it, John, you have a comment?
I'm going to say two things. The architect, he sent out surveys to all the town committees and departments and so forth. Three or four-page survey. I had to list as a trustee of trust funds what workspace was needed, what storage space, how many file cabinet drawers are needed in twenty thirty-five and so forth. And he worked up for the program needs for town hall, areas for all of break room, public toilets, storage, office space, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And then Randy Stevens designed it, five thousand square feet. He had rooms drawn, so I have comparisons of those two. The Randy Stevens is not a simple reduction of each room. Some actually got larger. In some cases, the biggest was a sixty-eight percent increase. And then there were some areas that were eliminated, not in the Randy Stevens design, but they were in the architect's original five thousand nine hundred and, I think it was fifty-three square feet. Five thousand nine hundred and fifty-three square feet. So when the committee looked at this, the committee came up with a smaller plan. They actually did draw some room layouts. But primarily, the five thousand to forty-seven fifty was to reduce the cost. But as Scott pointed out, that's a small change.
It's a change.
The biggest change came from, the architect estimated the building cost at two hundred to two hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. And the figure that's used by the committee for the mid-cost is one seventy. And for the high cost, they only kept the upper limit of the architect's figure, the two fifty. So when you're comparing the six million to the three million, a very big piece of that is two hundred and fifty dollars a square foot to one seventy a square foot. There was never a detail of why, what do you get when you pay two fifty a square foot versus what are we missing or losing or taking out when you pay one seventy? And, but by far the biggest difference is the cost per square foot, not the areas.
The other thing we had is, Wayne Lewis got us a square footage construction cost grid. I think he got it from Bill? I'm not sure. Got it from someplace, but it's something the industry uses. So that's where the one sixty, one seventy came from. But I agree with you, you know, if you're having gold-plated whatever, that's going to cost you way more. But, you know, what do you get for the one seventy? So I think that's a good question. The thing we did bring, Bud Meterdown, who built the transfer station for us, and we told him how much we budgeted for that particular building. And we told him in terms of, we modeled off the Profit Key building. And he was very comfortable in terms of, he could build that building for that amount of cost, so. But, yeah, once again, what furnishes are you getting? Are you getting carpeting? Are you getting linoleum? Are you getting whatever you need, so?
Does it include all of the security communication wiring that you might want in a town hall?
Exactly. So, but I think to address your point, John, is, I think if you went to the townspeople and said, we're looking for X amount to do drawings, model, and those kind of elevations, I think when you get into the conversations with the builders, or the architect, however we choose to do it, I think you're going to have to narrow down what those things are, because they're going to need those pieces of information to give you a price. Because after you get those particular drawings, you're going to have to get, how much is it going to cost? Because when you come back the second year, you're going to ask them for that amount of money. So I think this is, I think might be enough to give them an idea of, this is what we're thinking. We need some money for drawings and to do an RFP to find out how much exactly it's going to cost, but we're in the ballpark.
Exactly.
But I think, yeah, because you're going to have to find with this, whoever we choose, if it gets passed, sit down with all those people that are affected, the library. Sit down with the town hall staff, coenforcement, those people. Say, okay, this is the flow they've come up with. What do you like? What do you don't like? Is enough space to do everything that you need? So you're going to have to have those conversations, same thing we did here with the fire department and the police department. When the architect was chosen, Michael Kutter, we had numerous meetings sitting down. And we moved closets, we moved this, we moved that. So you're going to have to have the same conversations with those people, with whoever we choose as well, so.
Sounds like a funny. Julie, anything? You good?
I'm good.
Dave?
Good.
Right.
I do agree with the expanding the parking.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's really key.
I think so too. Parking's always been an issue, as it is now. And if you've got this expansion, absolutely, more parking, better off we are.
Can I ask you a question? How are we doing with our road closures? Do we have any more open, or do we have any updated information, or?
I haven't received any of it.
Yeah, I appreciate that, going into the town pride.
Well, I was thinking about it, and I'm thinking, well, it's coming to us as the townspeople, number one.
You would like to know too.
I would be irritated if I'm going for a trip and I'm going down, whatever road, and it's blocked, I'd rather know ahead of time, but.
Yeah, when I was coming back to university, and no road, the other thing that was blocked, I'd go some tourist roundabout waiting in the way. That was good.
Better to know ahead of time than you complaining at a trip, other than going and having to turn around and come back again and say.
All right, if there's nothing else at this point, I guess we can go. Thank you very much, I'm going.